Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
You're right. Okay, at this point Pastor Jackson is here.
He's right here.
Gonna come up and do an invocation, sorry about that. Yes, step right up.
I told you, I'm his teacher.
Father, we thank you for Baldwin Park. We thank you for the government here in Baldwin Park. And we thank you, Lord, that they're bringing the youngsters up to get involved in politics. And this is implanted in his mind that, like you say, he may end up being President of the United States. But Lord God, we have new elections, many promises. We pray that this nation will come together and those that are elected officials will uphold their promises and what they ran on the campaign and will do what they said. We're asking you, Lord, to bless the mayor and the city council. We're asking you to bless the, all of those that are on the panel here that's helped governing Baldwin Park. Our police department, put your hand of protection over them as they're writing the city, making the decisions and keeping them protected as they are protecting our citizens. And those that have jobs and businesses that are here in the city. We're asking you to bless our city, bless our owners of jobs and bless our homes, Lord. That Baldwin Park will be a blessed city, blessed from above. And so we thank you now and bind and break the power of the enemy that comes against our young people with drugs and gangs and unite the family together as a family, Father, Mother, and Family. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Absent.
Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present.
Thank you. And also the mayor, Alex E.
Mayor Alex E.
Present.
Alrighty, thank you. And he'll continue on. At this point, I want to close on two individuals. The first one that I have is Patricia Salva. Patricia Salva, a longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park, passed away on October 18th, 2014, at her home here in Baldwin Park on a street called Idaho. She's survived by her son Luciano and her daughter Gina, their spouses, and four grandchildren. Patricia lived a dedicated life to her children and family. She was committed to her children, their education, and their well-being. She was active in the Boy Scouts and in St. John's Baptist Parish School. Patricia will be remembered as a loving mother, a good friend, and a strong and brave woman, and a caring person who always wanted what was best for her children. So at this point, I want to, on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, those of you that may or may not know, several weeks ago there was a tragedy on Idaho. And it, I just want to send our condolences out. I attended the funeral. And it was a tragedy for a special person that I had the opportunity, the privilege and the honor to meet as a community, involved in our community in many aspects, the Boy Scouts and a multitude of other organizations. She was a person who was not only very compassionate but caring to others. So we will truly miss her. And this will remain in the city minutes of the city of Baldwin Park, recognizing Patricia Salva as a resident of the city of Baldwin Park. I want to also extend our condolences to Anthony Bejarano. I'll say senior, was not senior, but because his son served on the city council. He passed away last week. He was a member of the Baldwin Park Unified School District from 2001 to 2007. He was also a Vietnam veteran where he was decorated with the Silver Star. Served as a president as well, the Baldwin Park Unified School District. Heavily involved, a beautiful person, his entire family and grandkids. And I had an opportunity to first meet him back in about the mid-19, late 1980s in Baldwin Park. And his funeral services will be held this weekend, 2:00 PM, over at the Performing Arts Center. So invite all those that are available to attend on that particular day. A special person to great individuals that were members of the city of Baldwin Park. So at this point, anyone else wishing to close on anyone? Yes?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I would like to close on behalf of Guadalupe Morel, who is the mother of Abel Millen, who's been active here in our community and has a business here in Baldwin Park. He's Abel, who owns the mechanic shop. His mother passed away, so I'd like to just extend our condolences to her. Also, I'd like to congratulate all the winners of our election that occurred yesterday. Our Assemblyman Roger Hernandez, Ann Hernandez, our state senator, Grace Apolitano, our state, I'm sorry, Congresswoman Brian Urias, is he here? He's won his upper St. Gabriel Water seat. And I guess Hilda Solis is now officially our supervisor, I'm sorry, Supervisor Hilda Solis. So round of applause for all those and hopefully... And all these individuals are elected officials and legislators that the city of Baldwin Park works very closely with. And I know that each of them, in their heart, that now they have won, are ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work. So I know especially Assemblymember Roger Hernandez. Cruz Baca and I had a meeting with him about a month ago. We talked about doing a new workforce center, trying to bring that here. And he kind of shared some ideas on how he can help us on that. So we're ready to move forward and it's good to see that they're all back in office. Thank you.
I also wanted to send out a congratulations in the Island Empire to Connie Leva, who won by a landslide, very excited, very active in the labor unions, as well as Norma Torres.
Oh, yeah.
Two great ladies that, yes, a round of applause for them. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, we normally, in the past, have asked that the city send them congratulations. That is on our behalf of the surrounding cities. And we've done that in the past, so if we can do that again, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright.
We're gonna go on to presentations. Caltrans presentation and report to the city council on the Interstate 10605 interchange project.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening?
Good evening.
Yes, we're here. I represent MCM Construction. We're the contractor doing the project for Caltrans at the 10605. The connector, this is the flyover bridge that ultimately will be from, the connector between southbound 605 and eastbound 10, eliminating the weave that now you experience underneath the 10605. We've been at it for a bit of time and following the HOV project, we'd like to bring you an update. We've been here before, but we'd like to thank the city council and the police department of the city of Baldwin Park and assisting in helping us with this presentation and also Caltrans, who supplied the photography. But thank you for assisting us with this. And so we'd like to give you a presentation and then answer any questions. Excuse me. This is Marilyn Hayes, our public relations, public communications liaison for the project.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We wanted to show you, basically, MCM and Caltrans had a really unique opportunity. And it's through the generosity of the mayor and the city council and the police department that allowed this video. Let's just start it up again. It was three weeks ago, we had an opportunity to get a city cam up there with a videographer and shoot from all angles. So let me play that and then we'll just do a short presentation with an update on construction.
Well, that's very impressive compared just to the still pictures. Now get a kind of a caption from the aerial. That's great.
Yeah, it's wonderful. And again, we thank you. I think that for those of you who aren't speed readers, I can kind of just go through some of the pieces that were listed up there with that...
Now, out of curiosity, let me ask you a question. Do we have a timetable as to when the, I mean, it's going up super fast. How long before it's completed, the whole, I know I just saw the connector from off of Frazier.
The bridge will be open the fall next year. In other words, the traffic will be on it and will be done by the end of 2015. So basically, the project has one more year. They'll tie it together, barriers, signs. The only thing that will be left at that time is just the landscaping. So within a year, that bridge will be open.
Wow, okay, it's great.
I'm sorry, and can you remind me, if you don't mind, what are the plans for the one that is already in place right now? Are they just gonna leave that alone? The one that we're using now to drive onto the 10th, yes, underneath?
Okay, the connector now, so if you're going westbound on the 10 and you take the off-ramp to go southbound on the 605, south, yeah, southbound 605, it's a two-lane connector. That will remain two lanes. The lane now that for the traffic is coming southbound on the 605 that merges across that to land up east on the 10, that will be removed. That goes on the bridge. So that there will not be a weave. And the two lanes that go west to south will then have no obstructions and will go full speed.
So it'll float a little bit better because of the two lanes without the suicide, I call it suicide bridge, right? You're having to, you know, go in and out of cars so quickly. Thank you for that.
Yeah, so it will not be the cross-traffic that you will experience now underneath the existing interchange.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Salva.
Okay, I don't know if this is going to prove, but if you get on the 605 going south, if you get on off of Ramona, the amount of time or space that you have to merge over to continue on the 605, it's very short because you find yourself almost getting onto the 10 westbound. Is that going to change once the bridge is done? Because it's very dangerous. I use that all the time. You use it too.
So you're speaking, you're speaking of the three lanes now, 605 on the 10. The three lanes going southbound on the 605. Those three lanes will exist. The HOV lane will come back. And then, right now where the exit lane is, there's two exit lanes that go, the two exit lanes will still remain, only to be moved over further to the right. One will go to westbound and one will go over the bridge and land up eastbound.
What, okay, so what about the people that want to keep merging into the 605 to stay on the 605 south? Because it's a very short...
You're talking if you come off the Ramona on-ramp?
Right.
That, the length does not increase, if you realize the length was not increased between the bridge now and at Ramona. The difference is the off-ramps or the lanes will be moved over to the right, which will give you a smoother transition. Right now, you have to go over two lanes to have a through lane?
You have to go over really quick or otherwise you end up on the 10.
And one of them is an off-ramp. When this is done, it'll be one less lane you'll have to go over. Right now, due to the construction, because it still lands up on the same weave underneath the bridge, it's just a short merge. That, once the construction is done, will lengthen.
Okay, that was my concern.
And you probably see all those cones and the lineers on the right side and the piece of pavement that's not being used.
It's actually very scary to merge there onto the 605. It's very dangerous.
We've actually had a very good safety record through there so far. It's gone well. We've had a few incidents, but minor, and we hope through construction it stays like this. So far, the traffic record is, has been very good. And we hope to maintain it for our final year.
Well, yeah, we're very careful. It is scary though. It's very scary to merge on there.
I understand.
But it'll get better. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question in regards to that, if you please. Is there a possibility that there could be signage? You know how sometimes the freeway signs will say, "Stay on this lane if you want to go north, south, east, west, whatever." Where she's talking, could there be a sign that says, "Stay on this lane if you want to proceed south on the 605?" So that otherwise she doesn't have to be crossing a bunch of lanes.
When our project is done, there will be new overhead signage that will match the new lanes.
Okay.
And right under Ramona, if you make that right, on the southbound, you'll see that there's some barriers and there's a signed foundation actually built already. But since the new traffic lanes aren't there, the sign isn't erected.
Okay.
But the sign will be over and there'll be another warning sign, actual message sign. And they're all with the, you know, with the arrows pointing directly to the lane that you'll be in.
Okay, thanks.
And so, yes, is the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Actually, I just did that connector tonight, just before the sun went down, so I know what you're saying. And that's truly what was there before this project started. You had three different venues, different directions that you were trying to go, or the motorists were trying to go. What happens is that you can see where the bridge is coming, that is being brought down to the ground level. That's gonna be a bridge. That'll take, you know, a large amount of traffic heading on the eastbound 10 away from that weave situation with the two remaining cars. Am I explaining that right? Because I think, I think that's what's important. That's the reason the bridge is coming in, because that's gonna remove that three-way.
Currently and in the past, some of the lanes you go in, you had two directions or two choices. When this is done, one lane will go westbound, one lane will go eastbound, the other lanes will go southbound. It won't be even a lane and some turn off and some don't. I think truly it'll be clear and hopefully not as scary when we're done.
And I'm a good driver, mind you. It's just, I know it's the construction.
There'll be less choices is what I'm saying. I think it'll, you'll have to be deliberate.
I know it has to do with the barriers and the construction, but for the time being, it is pretty scary to get on that on-ramp.
The other project benefits are basically the idea that we, with this elevated flyover bridge, we will have a reduced commuter delay in that merged intersection or, excuse me, exchange, which will eliminate the weaving and improve safety and mobility in the area. There will also be ramp metering at the end of the bridge. So you will have a controlled entry onto the I-10 during busy hours. Some basic facts, as I mentioned, they kind of floated by on the screen very quickly with the video, is that its height is 58 feet high. The connector will touch down just east of Frazier Street off-ramp with a roadway that continues underneath Best Avenue. So it comes down smoothly back to the eastward heading I-10. There will be sound walls that'll be constructed along Dalewood Street on the south side of the I-10. And the majority of the bridge work, this is the good news, is performed at night. And the majority of the roadwork along the sides is being performed during the day. This is to reduce noise. This is some more, we basically just wanted to provide some updated pictures of construction. There's been a removal of the metal and wooden false work on the northern section. You'll see as if you go under the bridge in your travels, that that wooden false work is starting to become, you know, taken down now because now these columns actually fully support the section of the bridge. There is a completion of retaining wall, the retaining wall on the 605 south to the west connector. And there is a complete completion of the 605 south to the I-10 west connector ramp. So that's completely done. There are some milestones. I don't want to get too much into them, but, you know, we talked a little bit about erecting the false work on the eastern section of the bridge and constructing right-side retaining walls on the roadway which approach the northern section of the bridge. And again, continued false work removal on the northern section. In the next three months, there will be the completion of the remaining columns. There are five columns along Dalewood Street, which will be completed. There is a continual erection of false work on the eastern section. And they will begin the retaining wall and roadway work on the eastern end of the bridge.
Let me ask you a question. We could go back to that video real quick. Sorry about that.
Sure.
Are those homes, I know some, they've already torn down two of the, that home, there's about three left. Are they being torn down? Because I know two others right next to them I have already demolished.
The state, the state had four houses removed and demolished. No more will be removed.
Oh, so they'll stay. Alright, okay.
And the two you see, actually the ones behind the pickup are just above, they're actually occupied, the first two?
Yes, okay, alrighty.
Our community outreach efforts, basically our weekly lane closure alerts that we do in the form of press releases, which are sent out by District 7 Caltrans on their website to the media. And then we also have social media activity. I'm gonna go right through that to our Facebook. If you guys want to like us, it's the Facebook I-10605 Direct Connector. This is a little bit of an old slide. We have more than 3,000 people now liking us on Facebook and motorists looking at this for each weekly lane closure and updated results as well as photography. When we do have some activity in the nearby community, we provide leafleting to the homes, to their doorstep, so that they know that there might be something happening which would impact perhaps driving during that project. This is, it's just an example of community feedback. We've had a lot of very good community feedback through the social media, both Twitter and Facebook. And quite frankly, we were surprised and very delighted to see that. People, of course, the big question is, when will this be done? But we do answer questions that are posted on Facebook. And we've had a lot of people like, you know, big comments back to that. So we feel like we have a good communication. This is the Caltrans contact information. Jessica Jovell is our public information manager on this project. And we can take any other questions that she might have.
Alright, I'll just, real quick, I wonder if we could get together and play something in the now so that the residents at least kind of get an idea and know about the bridge being finished off next week. So if we could get together, what was your first name? Sorry about that.
Marilyn.
Marilyn. We could get together with her so we could place an actual little op-ed on what's going on with the transition of the actual 605. Alrighty, I guess that's about it unless anyone has questions? Alright, now, thank you very much, Dave. Thank you very much. Chief, thank you very much. And Cameron, and also thank you for making it happen for the aerial. Big difference. Thank you.
Just one question.
Oh, there's one more. Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Sorry. You said that there was going to be a sound wall on Dalewood. Will that have some type of a buffer where we can see some trees or shrubs or something to deter graffiti?
Right now, if you know, I guess the answer to your question is no. And if, the way this is designed, the right-of-way, if you know, the one picture with the houses, the new Dalewood Street takes up right against the sound wall and the highway is right against the sound wall.
Okay.
And right now, the barrier is there. You just see a bunch of rebar sticking in the air. And if you notice, if you drive that part, it's there so we could finish the bridge that goes above it and then that'll be installed. That area will not have landscape, it'll be paving because there's no room for that, is the way that was, the right-of-way was turned over to us. Now, if you get down by the Frazier Street off-ramp, that will have a landscaped area in there and the area along. There's another piece along as you approach the park. But the west of Ethel Street Bridge, the barrier will not have. There's landscape areas at both ends of Dalewood Street, but not right at the barrier. Yeah, there's decorative masonry and stuff, just like it's on the other ones. And virtually, the sound wall started out as part of the last contract, which you saw up and down the highway. In our case, they left it out for the pure reason that if they had done it, we'd have had to turn around and tear a bunch of it down, which makes no sense at all. So they took that scope out of their contract and put in our contract. So we'll finish the sound walls.
I have another question. How is it that some cities, when they have those sound walls built? For example, when you're heading out towards Ontario, Santa Ana, Anaheim, the sound walls have like a really nice design. Where does that come from? Is that something you do or is that the city?
And that's a Caltrans program thing. We're not involved with that. If you notice, our end, what was provided to us is the pattern, to continue the pattern that was on the previous HOV job. So the HOV project has a block pattern on all of sound walls. It'll be identical on our job. When the abutments, if you drive currently, if you take the, the way you drive, if you come 605 south and take the weave, if you notice the new retaining wall that was just built is all sculptured concrete with two patterns. And the new retaining walls that will be built by the Frazier off-ramp will have that sculptured pattern completely. And that was provided to us, the parameters for that in our Caltrans request for proposals. And we followed up from their requirements and did that. So as far as different cities and different states, how they have their branding, that's a Caltrans issue. Not that we would have input for our one project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council.
Thank you very much, Dave. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Next, we have the presentation of a proclamation recognizing in the home care providers and declaring November as Family Caregivers Month.
Do we have someone?
You do, they're all here.
Oh, okay, alrighty.
And first of all, I'd like to thank, a lot of them are residents of Baldwin Park. Councilmember Rubio and myself went to their graduation, one of their graduations about a month ago. This is a wonderful program. And as you see more and more long-term care, which also includes the care that some of the caregivers gave to my mother during her last year and a half, these people really need to be recognized and commended for the work that they do and you're able to keep your loved one at home, so.
Alright, well, I want to first of all thank Councilmember Cruz Baca and thank Councilmember Susan Rubio. And I will have Councilmember Cruz Baca read the proclamation.
Now, at this time, if you don't mind, I would like to invite all of them to come up, up here to receive the proclamation, if you don't mind coming up here with us. Thank you.
And it reads, "Whereas, close to 145,600 home care workers in the county of Los Angeles, including approximately 1,000 in-home supportive services workers who reside in Baldwin Park, deliver quality care to our most vulnerable residents, including seniors and adults and children with disabilities. And home care workers not only provide vital care to those in need, but also save taxpayers millions of dollars each year when compared to more costly tax-funded institutional care. And the work of home care workers often goes unnoticed, as do the financial struggles that caregivers and their families experience in order to provide this lifeline service to those in need. And the number of family and non-family members requiring in-home care will drastically increase as the number of Americans who are 65 years of age and older is expected to double in the next 30 years. And in order to meet the future demands of caregiving, we must ensure a stable workforce for recognizing today the important contributions that home care workers bring to those receiving care, to our communities and to society as a whole. Providing home care workers with a living wage will generate demand for goods and services in the local economy, stimulate increased employment opportunities, and generate additional income, which will in turn lead to additional spending in Baldwin Park and other communities across California, including Los Angeles, San Diego, West Hollywood, Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco. They've already taken steps to recognize the importance of creating a pathway to a higher living wage as a standard to lift workers out of poverty and revitalize communities." Now, therefore, Mayor Manuel Lozano, along with Mayor Protem Ricardo Pacheco, councilmembers Cruz Baca, Monica Garcia, and Susan Rubio, members Cruzbaca, Monica Garcia and Susan Rubio, City Treasurer Maria Contreras and City Clerk Alejandra Avila, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Family Caregivers' Month. Through this recognition, the City of Baldwin Park voices support for their efforts to lift themselves and their communities out of poverty as they fight for a path to earn a higher living wage. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Okay, Rosario Quintero will be speaking. So at this point Cruzbaca will be handling the proclamation. Pass it on.
Pues muchas gracias, mi nombre es Rosario Quintero, soy trabajadora de cuidado en casa por ya siete años que cuido a mis papás. Este, tan...
Good evening everyone. Well, I wanted to say thank you very much. My name is Rosario Quintero. I'm a home care provider and I take care of my father.
Y también estoy aquí representando, soy miembro de la mesa ejecutiva del sindicato de trabajadores a largo plazo, SIU ULTCW.
I'm also here, I'm part of the union member, I'm part of the board, Executive Board, I'm part of the SUIU and ULTCW.
Y este el grupo que estamos aquí estamos en la representación de los mil miembros trabajadores de cuidado a largo plazo que pertenecemos a la ciudad de Baldwin Park y pertenecemos a la unión de trabajadores de cuidado en casa.
I'm also here representing with along my coworkers which are part of the, we're all home care providers. We're part of the 2,000 home care providers here in Baldwin Park. One thou, she said 2,000, 1,000, excuse me.
Y también queremos agradecer a los miembros que nos han otorgado este conocimiento, también a la señora Cruzbaca, Susan, el mayor, el señor Pacheco, a todos los miembros en general. Gracias.
And I want to thank you, everybody that has given us this recognition, Cruzbaca, the major, I lost all their names, and everyone else involving them in the council.
Okay, we're going to take, una foto. Where's the mayor? Where's the mayor? Come on up here.
Okay, this camera real quick, one, two.
Gracias. Yes, oh yes. Say one more, Ricardo. Please, the mayor. For this picture.
And at three, one, two, and, over here please.
Okay. Gracias. Thank you brother, thank you.
I'd also like to thank Juan Carlos that brought this program and this wonderful training to Baldwin Park. Thank you.
And also thank you to Manny Carrillo that gives them the space for the training
over at our Parks and Rec Department. It's a wonderful program.
And I now open the public communication. Anyone wish to speak, have three minutes to speak.
Alright, thank you. So come on up.
Mayor, before we start, I know that we always have a lot of public communication but, you know, I would never ask anybody not to express what they need to express, but just be mindful that we have a student up here and that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Forgot to say that. I forgot to ask.
Can we bring one up every week?
Thank you. So noted, thank you. Good evening everyone. My name is Mary McCormick. I'm the president and chief executive officer of a company called MBI Media. We actually are just down the street, our headquarters are in Covina. But the reason for my attendance this evening is to let you know that I'm here from the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, or Metro. And I wanted to give you some information on some activities that are going to be occurring after the first of the year and I wanted to make sure that you are aware of them. We actually are going to be speaking about a company, a project called SR710. It is through a draft environmental document right now, which means that you can actually have public comments and input on the particular project. It's a project that is being studied right now between the 10 and the 210 and there are five alternatives that are being understudied, in design and studied right now. The hope is that there'll be actually, the draft environmental document will be out in February and we're going to be having two public hearings typically in a statewide. It's the SEQUA NEPA, the California Environmental Quality Act and the National Environmental Protection Act. And that SEQUA NEPA study allows for a lot of public comment and input. So I wanted to just let you know that they're going to be releasing it in February. They typically have a 45-day review period, but this is going to be extended and they're going to be extending it for 90 days. I've provided fact sheets and information in both English and in Spanish. We have cards as well. If you would like to get more information, you just fill it out and send it to us. We'd be happy to send some information to you. And there is a website that has a lot of information as well and it's just www metro.net/SR710study. So I wanted to make sure, and you should have copies in front of you, we wanted to make sure the city had information as it's ongoing and the draft will be out in February and then we actually will be coming back to you to give you some more additional information and when the final environmental document is. We feel very strongly that we are asking for your participation. It is part of the regional transportation plan where we look at everything. Obviously, tonight you saw that the 605 and the 10 is a critical interchange for our neighborhood here. That is as well, to try to find ways to clear up congestion and relieve a lot of that because a lot of us out here at the 10 605 get some congestion all the way in from Los Angeles. So your input and your public comment is very, very, very welcome.
Thank you very much. We'll link that up to our website.
That would be lovely. I'll make sure that you get the information and we'll be giving and providing you data for your citizenry on the second floor so that if anybody has any interest, they can get it.
Actually, better, yeah, we'll do that as well. Let's include that in our next newsletter that goes out to all 75,000 residents, at least a little small article. You might want to get together with our staff.
I'd be happy to do that. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Should I contact the?
Actually, who would she contact? Okay Manny, please.
Okay, thanks Manny.
Alright, you can exchange your cards, I'd appreciate that.
Alright, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Move along with other communications.
Good evening mayors, city council members, community of Baldwin Park. My name is Daniel Levanos. I am with One Legacy Donate Life. I am your city ambassador. I would like to introduce myself to that. Right now, we are the organ procurement organization. We are the bridge that links the patients to the transplant centers. Currently, we have over 125,000 individuals waiting for the gift of life. Sadly enough, we lose about 18 people on a daily basis. 1 in 200 is a perfect match for organ donation and there's several ways that you can become a donor. You become a living donor by giving one of your kidneys or one of your lungs or a part of your liver or you could go on to our websites, www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, NCF Español y www.donavidaCalifornia.org. I am a liver transplant recipient. I received my gift of life December 27th of 2003. I'll be celebrating 11 years this year, Christmas, and I decided that I needed to speak out because they helped me in my time of need. Also, I understand that the City of Baldwin Park signed a city proclamation for our donor awareness month in April. I have an invitation for the mayor to come down and put the City of Baldwin Park's dedicational rose on our Donate Life float this year, 2015. The event's the 29th of December and the RSV by the 15th. We would be honored to have you come down and put the rose on our float, connecting with all the cities in the state of Southern California and have all our mayors come down and do the same thing. I have some brochures here for the City Hall if they like to put it out. I will be coming around about every other week to keep the information up.
I appreciate that and I just wanted to, I'm very familiar with One Legacy. They do a phenomenal job at the various hospitals and want to thank you very much and congratulations on your liver transplant.
Thank you very much.
It's amazing the surgery that could be done now compared to say 30, 35 years ago.
Oh yes, amazing for modern technology these days.
Thank you. If you could hand the information over to our city clerk.
Alright, thank you.
City treasurer, thank you. Alright, thank you.
You're almost up. Hey, Thomas Carey.
Well, we know that there's a cuss bug that comes to the meeting but it's not here, at least not yet. I don't mean me, I mean, we know who we mean. I couldn't believe at that meeting he was saying those things. I'd never heard words like that here. You should never hear those things here. I keep it, I'm going to have to leave because I had a little, what I call a catastrophe. Something broke in the transaxle. I don't know. Something made one hell of a noise. I'm sure glad I wasn't on the freeway with that. There was no warning. Whatever it was, there was no noise, there was no precursor, nothing. It just suddenly just bang, right over there by the high school where the new light is. When I took off from there, boom. So I was very fortunate, some people came along and helped push me, the beast over this way, a little closer to Baldwin Park or downtown. Have no idea what it is. I don't know if the CV snapped. Usually, they make noise before they break. So I don't know, maybe it was the internal shaft on the transmission or the torque converter or something. I made one heck of a noise. Well, how much that's going to cost me to have fixed? Hopefully, engine dynamics can fix it. I know it doesn't have much to do with the city, but I still have my car worked on here even though I don't live over here. Everything I know is here. I should have stayed here instead of moving out to the oven out there. I may be staying tonight, an unscheduled voyage, you know, voyage to back San Bernardino's been canceled. I don't have any way to get back over there. And I, anyway, I see here that some people are trying to get their vehicles back or something is on the agenda. They're trying to sue or something. I did read a certain person's blog saying that the police shouldn't, you know, ticket for cars with cracked windshield, bald tires, lights out and things like that. What are you supposed to do? Supposed to let these unsafe things run around? Can't see them when all the lights are out? You're on them before you see them? Who's going to be responsible for that? This guy with his blog. I know you have the hearing coming up on the 17th. What time is that, Mr. Mayor?
You know what, that's at 7 o'clock, right?
I mean, over at the, yeah, the courthouse.
Is that 6 o'clock? But we'll get it for you after that. I'll send you over here.
I mean, I mean the litigation over in, the small claims act.
17th, 1:30.
1:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should have told you. Yeah, hopefully I have my beast back up and running by then. Yeah, I mean, this person with his blog, I said that thing should be used against him. I mean, there's a lot of things in there. Oh, I know, I've been told I shouldn't read such things, but he doesn't want the city police here to enforce the city, the state law, the penal codes and stuff, so.
Sorry about that, thank you very much.
Okay, I spent too much time on the transaxle.
Alright, wish you well with your car. Alright, thank you.
Thomas, you want me to call road coaches? Tell me to take it or Greg Tuttle's, please? Okay, just ask him.
Hello, City Council, I'm Mr. Luna, an audience. The soccer league, I have not heard very much about it, but number one, don't give no more containers to anybody. We had containers sitting over by the freeway, the 10 freeway for about 40 years. If I wouldn't have complained or other people wouldn't have complained, they'd still be sitting there. So no more containers. Somebody wants to put a container in, have them pay for it. Us city people, including us residents, don't want anything free anymore. I'm tired of telling you folks and we're tired of telling everybody, don't give anything free. Somebody wants some of our land, make them pay for it. I mean, don't it make sense? That's our revenue. You give our land away, we'll never get that revenue back again. So keep it. Along the freeway, there's a lot of empty buildings over there, empty space. I understand we don't have tons and tons of money to buy that property, but that's what we need to do. Don't spend $45 million building this thing around City Hall when if we can buy the property along the freeway, we'll have plenty places to put businesses and people will get off the freeway, do their business and get back on the freeway. Nowadays, people don't like to travel any further than they have to from the freeway. So as far as the containers go, no. If this soccer league is so wealthy, how much is the city getting from this soccer league? I've noticed nobody mentions how much we're getting from them. If the tuition for that person to play on that field, which belongs to us residents, is 45 bucks, how much of that are we getting? Or are we paying them to show up? Either way, that is wrong. The containers, forget it. You have containers, pretty soon you have graffiti. We have enough as it is. We don't need more graffiti. If you guys want to give stuff away, give us our property so we don't have to pay taxes. Now, people would appreciate that. As far as your agenda, your number two, approve of a minutes meeting, I mean minute meetings? Some of these are July the 17th, 2013. Does it take you people a year and a half almost or over a year decide, oh, I think we should approve those minutes? Why are these, you have number one through nine, all 2013. Why are these so long? Why are these?
Luna, your three minutes are up.
Yeah, my three minutes were interrupted. I suggest that you guys don't take so long on these minutes. If they're done right, sign them through.
Alright, thank you very much, appreciate that. Move along with public communication.
I would just like to just briefly point out that the afternoon rush hour between Target Center and, what is that, by In-N-Out Burger, there seems to be like a congestion, there's sometimes even gridlock. I was wondering if maybe it would help as a suggestion maybe to open up a right turn lane going from eastbound Francis Kito to southbound Violent? Because sometimes cars kind of like their checkerboard setting and I was just wondering maybe that would help. I myself see cars, sometimes I'm traveling out that way and I see cars, you know, and I mean, this is rush hour, 5 o'clock or maybe 4 and there's the MetroLink, you know, right there and then some cars actually, you know, they not necessarily park or on the railroad, they're not waiting on the railroad tracks but sort of like haphazardly sort of nearby and I just, you know, it gets kind of nervous just watching all this. So I would suggest maybe it would help maybe ease the traffic flow or maybe consider doing some kind of study within that segment of Francis Kito Avenue between Main Street and Violent Avenue there. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much and I'm glad you brought that up. I do know, just to let you know that LA Fitness is going to be actually building one of their, one of their facilities right across from there and I know that that actual little
I was wondering if maybe it would help, as a suggestion, maybe to open up a right-turn lane going from eastbound Franciscoito to southbound Violent? Because sometimes cars kinda like their checkerboard setting, and I was just wondering maybe that would help. I myself see cars, sometimes I'm traveling out that way, and I see cars, you know, and I mean, this is rush hour, 5 o'clock, or maybe 4, and there's the MetroLink, you know, right there, and then some cars actually, you know, they're not necessarily parking or on the railroad, they're not waiting on the railroad tracks, but sort of like haphazardly sort of nearby, and I just, you know, it gets me kinda nervous just watching all this. So, I was gonna suggest maybe it would help, maybe ease the traffic flow, or maybe consider doing some kind of study with them, that segment of Franciscoito Avenue, between Main Street and Violent Avenue there. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad you brought that up. I do know, just to let you know, that LA Fitness is going to be actually building one of their, one of their facilities right across from there, and I know that that actual little medium where the actual pole's at, that will be changed out, to straighten it out. But it's not gonna happen, at least not in the next six months, just to let you know. But we will definitely check into that if we could, Mr. Dan Wall. All right, thank you. Martha.
Good evening, both mayors. Yeah, you got it, Magda. Good evening, both mayors, city council, and everyone that's present. Magda Terellis, longtime resident here. Don't worry about me, I'm a sailor, but our rule is no provocation, speech, or gesture in front of women and children. One thing we have a problem with is over at the swimming pool. I've talked about this many times. The women's room over on the north side of the pool, I don't know if that's dust, dirt, but, or mold that's building up in there, but it looks really gross, and I'm just even too disgusted to go in there and take a shower. They need another drain. What I don't understand is why is water seeping in from the showers into the, well, let's just say, the toilet area? We need to put some kind of a strip or something to avoid the water there. I don't know. We've been fortunate, I guess 'cause people wear shower clogs that are with rubber, that we have not had anybody get electrocuted over the sinks, because here you are putting in a hair dryer, and they've got their feet, you know, over water. So, we've been very fortunate. I just don't understand how it is no one's ever got electrocuted, but we need to do something. I mean, if that's mold in there, we've got a major problem, and we need to clean that up, just for safety and security reasons, so. Anyway, I don't know if I'll be here for Thanksgiving, but do have a good Thanksgiving, and best to you guys doing a great job. Oh, as far as, you know, people complaining about giving tickets, or you keep giving people tickets. This is the only way they're gonna know that in the city of Baldwin Park, safety and security is of the utmost importance. We can't have cars with these cracked lights and what have you, one light on, one light off, and you don't know if it's a motorcycle coming at you, or a drunk driver, or whatever. People are gonna complain when they do things that are wrong, so just keep up the outstanding job and keep the rest of us safe and sound. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you very much. All right, move along with public communication.
City council, my name is Carolina Valdez, and I am here as a resident, as a concerned The thing is that where I live, my address is 15155 Navila Place, and there is not enough lighting. There's not a, there's only one light post in that whole street. And so, my concern is, I have a young adult child, teenager, and my neighbors as well have young adult women, and so, I'm concerned, even myself, when I decide to go to Walmart, for example, at 11:30 in the night, 'cause I need something, or I ran out of contact solution. So, my concern is, what can we do about installing some light in that block? Can Edison help us? What do we need to do?
I'll go ahead and address it once you're finished.
Okay. And then, my other concern is, well, I have a, okay, the light post is right on 15137, to be exact. That's the only light post there is on that block. And my other concern is a house that is 15144 on Navila Place, and it's an abandoned house, and this house has been broken, at least to my knowledge, twice. And there's a car that is parked there, unused, nobody lives in that house. So, my concern is, I've seen light in that house, so to me, it's breaking, because I've never seen, I mean, I have seen the owners, but that was many years ago, and so, they're never there. So, what can we do about this abandoned house?
You've just given the address, right? We'll definitely look into that.
Address is, for the abandoned house, is 15144 Navila Place.
Okay. All right, we'll send code enforcement to that.
Navila.
Navila. All righty? Okay, thank you very much. So, just real quick, you're gonna be next, just wanna let you know that we're gonna send code enforcement over there, and then, then we'll look into the lighting part. Maybe we could change out that light bulb to an LED, 'cause I'll be honest with you, we have 100 people wanting a light, the post in their blocks throughout Baldwin Park. However, we're gonna go over there, and we're gonna assess the situation. But go ahead.
I'm just curious, I know the city and the planning was done like 50 some odd years ago.
True.
And it's understandable, but we've recently got new coming in, and new fire hydrants, and things have been updated, and we see that. So, we're just inquiring as to if that's something that could possibly be done.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna refer you over to Mr. Dan Wall. You could exchange numbers there, so this two could follow up. Also, give us a follow-up on what transpires. We have the address as well. I wanna thank you very much for bringing that up to us. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on with public communication. Anyone else? If not, we're gonna close. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Moving up to public communication, anyone else wanting, wishing to speak?
I see no interest. I now declare.
See no interest? I know it's clear, it's closed.
All right, okay. Thank you, mayor. So, at this point, go ahead and read this, just consent calendar.
Oh, mayor, I just wanted to make a?
Yes, yes, yes.
Couple of quick comments. First of all, I noticed that the issue of the soccer league comes up quite a bit, and I know that Mr. Luna has brought some information about that, and I wanna make it clear that the soccer league is a nonprofit organization. The city doesn't control that league, and we don't, we don't rent fields to them. I mean, we don't, they don't use our fields every day in the city, or at least city fields. When they do, they do pay a fee, and they do pay for lighting, 'cause I know that they do do that when they come and use our facilities. We did loan them the, because they are a large league in the city, and they're nonprofit. We allow them to put their restrooms on city property, and they've been doing that for a number of years, because they're a group that's a place throughout the city of Baldwin Park now. Do they make a fortune doing what they do? I don't know. I don't, I don't think they do, but we don't look at their revenues. I don't think that they make an enormous amount of money, but you could ask, direct those questions to the league itself to see, you know, if you feel that they make a lot of money, and they should be paying fees, you might take that up with them. But as far as the city taking fees for them, there wouldn't be a reason to, because we don't really rent fields to them on a daily basis or weekly. Just when they have large programs, they may come to our save for them. Also, if we could again look into the lighting, this, as mayor had said, if we could follow up with that, and email the city council what will be done for that. There's abandoned houses is an issue. We could look at the one that they're referring to, but there are a number of abandoned houses throughout the city that I think we should be taking a more aggressively look at that, and now that we have on the agenda that we have a foreclosure program that the city's going to adopt, we should definitely be looking, using both code enforcement and, well, whatever means we have, to go after these abandoned houses. There's no reason why we should have, you know, these issues not taken care of, you know, through the city, so just wanna bring that up to the council. Also, well, I'll see my comments for later, but thank you. That's it.
All right, go ahead, mayor.
I now open consent calendar. Items 1 through 10.
So, any council members wishing to pull any item out? Oh, yeah, mayor, item four? Okay, item four, let me put that up, okay. Okay, if seeing none at this point, I'll move for consent calendars, 1 through 10, with the exception of four, that is my motion.
Oh, mayor, I just wanted to bring up to the community that item four, it's entitled "A Resolution of the City of Baldwin Park Adapting the City of Baldwin Park Safe Routes to School Master Plan." And this is a program that I and other council members have been working quite a bit. We've had a number of city workshops to talk about the different safe routes to schools that's looking at streets and how pedestrians get to their, and students can get to the schools using the crosswalks and the stop signs, and we're looking at that to update and upgrade the different streets that we have and the traffic that goes through there, and how we could keep our students and pedestrians safe as they're walking through the schools. So, we've had a number of meetings with parents and the school districts itself, and the students. We've had public workshops to talk to the public about the plans are. We've had charades and maps sitting there at the workshops that indicated, you know, what is it that the public's looking for, for more public safety? We've also had staff work with the city, with the school district to improve upon those areas. So, we're, we've developed a school master plan that has all the new routes that'll be laid out, different crosswalks, stop signs that will be put together, so just wanna point that out, and we're using these fundings to, for CDBG and other funding sources to pay for these particular improvements that we have. So, just wanted to bring that up to the mayor, and I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Excuse me, can we first get a second for mayor's motion? We didn't get a second.
That's right, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, there's a motion by council member.
Motion to approve item 10. Item four.
Yeah, and it was seconded by Councilmember Cruzbaca. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, so at this point, we're, at the end, council members have anything before we move to close? And then, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna go ahead, declare it.
Mayor, I would like to, I would like to remind the people that next Tuesday, November the 11th, is Veterans Day. We are celebrating it here in Baldwin Park on Tuesday, the 11th, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon at Morgan Park. It's a wonderful celebration, and not only because it's a day off from work, but it's a commemoration of our brave men and women that have served and are serving now. So, please come and join us, and show your, your support for this, and join us on Tuesday at 1 o'clock in the afternoon at Morgan Park. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I wanna also thank the mayor, Mr. Alex Yee, for being here today, and he will be closing the city council. I look forward, and going over to your classroom to giving you a certificate, okay? And one little mayor's badge, so I will ask your teacher to invite me, and I will be there. So, at this point, he's gonna read his.
Mayor, I'm sorry, before we close, I just wanna take this moment to thank the mayor. I've been doing this for many years now, and every year we have elections, he's always so gracious to step aside and allow my students to have this amazing experience. I can't even imagine being a third grader and sitting up here in front of so many adults and so many elected officials, so, you know, once again, thank you, mayor. I know you always allow me to do this, and I will continue to do this as long as you let me, so thank you, and thank you, Alex, for being here.
First of all, just wanna add, wanna also recognize, who's in, Ruby, who's a phenomenal teacher, and was taking her time to bring her students here. And let me, and let me also say to the parents that are here, what a bright, young, little, talented individual he is, and I'm certain he'll either be a doctor, or you may be the President of the United States, or an attorney. Yes, or an attorney, that's right.
Or city manager.
A city manager, something big, because he's really great. So, at this point, he's gonna go ahead and close the meeting for us. Go ahead.
I now declare the city council meeting closed via Baldwin Park.
Via Baldwin Park. Thank you. Let's get our pictures with him down here. Hey, you know what? Actually, Matt, can we get a picture?
He looks adorable.
Yes, he is.